Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the last business meeting of the calendar year as we head into our Christmas holiday. It is December 14, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners' Business Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We're holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in testifying, we will provide you public comment when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed during this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Administrator Gary Schmidt, we need to take the roll.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First, our staff support today: County Council Steven Madcor, Clerk to the Board Tony Mayernick, Commissioner West is out of the office today. Roll call, Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here, thank you very much. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, first is a public hearing, approval of a supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2023-2024. Fiscal impact is a net increase of appropriations of $11,334,707. Funding includes beginning fund balance, other revenue sources, federal grants, charges for services, and other intra-fund transfers. No county general funds are involved. Sandra Montoya is the county's budget manager. Go ahead, please.
Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioner, Sandra Montoya, Budget Manager. And this morning, I have a normal housekeeping item for you, and that is a request for a public hearing for a supplemental budget that will increase the county's budget by $11.3 million. The items are listed in fund order, and they, as Gary said, they pertain to the areas of, let me see, additional grant revenue. So the first item has a budget authority increase of $3.1 million, and it's for the tracking of opioid settlement funds, and that would be in a special grants fund. The item number two is an increase of $125,000. That's for the short-term rental program that we're starting, and that's for the administrative costs. Item number three is the county fair budget authority. That's the $2 million for the multipurpose building. So this supplemental budget has some exciting items that we're moving forward that we've been discussing for quite a while. Item number six is an increase in budget authority, again, for opioid settlement funds, also for federal ARPA awards and a state ARPA award. And so it's creating those different budget authority buckets or increasing them where needed. So I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. The package total across nine funds is $11.3 million.
Well, having it on the plus side is certainly better than the opposite, so we are grateful for that. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first on this particular budget item. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify on this particular budget item? I see no one in the room. Tony, is there anyone on Zoom?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. That's the end of our list. There is no one. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's further discussion. I will entertain a motion.
I move. We approve the supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Second. Commissioner Schull has moved. We approve the supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2023-24, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you very much. And Gary, what's next?
Next is a presentation, 2023 Clackamas County Achievements, and they are a lot. To present today, this topic is Tonya Holowetsky, who is interim Director of Public and Government Affairs. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners. Tonya Holowetsky, interim Director of Public and Government Affairs. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing the annual PGA video that we create to showcase some of the many achievements you and county staff have delivered to the community over the past year. We always look forward to this project because it allows us to show our residents and stakeholders how we all make Clackamas County a great place to live, work, and play. I hope you enjoy the video as much as we did producing it, and I'm happy to answer any questions after the preview. So, Tony, let's roll.
Thank you.
So many great comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clackamas County, for all who contributed in these great successes, and it's very wonderful that you were able to capture it on video for everybody to see.
As much as we could, there's a whole lot more.
Great, great. Thank you very much, Tony. Anything else you'd like to say?
No, that's it.
Any comments from Commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody from our government and public affairs office for all your good work. Appreciate what you do for the county and wish you all a happy Merry Christmas.
Thank you likewise.
Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
All right, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Distracted Driving Enforcement Grant. Agreement value is $15,000 for one year, or the $3,000 match funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation and $3,000 in budgeted county general funds for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Item three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Driving Under the Influence of Intoxics High Visibility Enforcement Grant. Agreement value is $15,000 for one year with a $3,000 match funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation and $3,000 in budgeted county general funds for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Item four, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Pedestrian Safety Enforcement Grant. Agreement value is $5,000 for one year with a $1,000 match funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation and $1,000 in budgeted county general funds for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Item five, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Speed Enforcement Grant. Agreement value is $20,000 for one year with a $4,000 match funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation and $4,000 in budgeted county general funds for the Sheriff's Office. Item six, approval of amendment number two, extending the duration and increasing funding to a contract with Mark 43 Incorporated for Records and Property Management Software. Amendment value is $212,506.40 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $1,431,495.44 for 7.25 years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds for the Sheriff's Office. Item seven, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Water Environment Services for Work Crew Services. Agreement value not to exceed $260,000 over four years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved for the Sheriff's Office. Finance, item one, approval of lease amendment number one for commercial space at the Clackamas Corner property with American Property Management for the Justice Court. Total value is $1,657,614.50 for a 10-year term. Funding is through Justice Court fees and fines. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a sublease agreement of parking lot spaces with American Property Management for the Justice Court. Total value is $1,539.96 for one year. Funding is through Justice Court fees and fines. No county general funds are involved. Technology Services, item one, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order with Dell Microsoft LP for Microsoft licensing. Purchase order value is $3,617,053.2 over a three-year term. Funding is through departmental cost allocations. No county general funds are involved. County Administration, item one, approval of change order number nine with Clackamas Progress Partners LLC for the replacement county courthouse for relief event number two, differing site conditions, unknown underground utility. Change order value is $41,599, leaving credits of $622,181.35. Funding is through credits from previous change orders, which includes budgeted county general funds. Item two, approval of change order 12 with Clackamas Progress Partners LLC for the replacement county courthouse for relief event number one, discovery of differing site conditions. Change order value is $134,360.10, leaving credits of $487,821.25. Funding through credits from previous change orders, which include budgeted county general funds. Item three, approval of change order 13 with Clackamas Progress Partners LLC for the replacement county courthouse for relief event number three, governmental approvals with respect to multiple improvements to high-field courts that are required under the Type II land-use permit issued by Oregon City. No financial commitment at this time, subject to future resolution. Health Housing Human Services, item one, approval of amendment number two, extending the duration and increasing funding of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Fire District Number One for medical direction. Amendment value is $72,000 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $216,000 for three years. Funding through Clackamas Fire District Number One. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of revenue health care services contract with Care Oregon Incorporated for enhanced transitions of care. Contract value is $350,000 for 11 months. Funding through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of board order authorizing a purchase order with Robert Half International Incorporated for temporary employee services for financial reporting, accounting, and procurement services. Purchase order value is $122,393.30 for six months. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of amendment number two, increasing funding and extending the term of a revenue grant agreement with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department for programs related to the governor's emergency due to homelessness. Amendment value is $980,000 for six months. Agreement value is increased to $5,415,294 for 18 months. Funding through the State of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of amendment number two, expanding the scope of work and increasing value of a personal services contract with Clackamas Women's Services for homeless services. Amendment value is $1,640,396. Total contract value is increased to $9,182,559 for 18 months. Funding through State of Oregon Emergency Order Grant Funds and Metro Support of Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a cooperative service agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture for the purposes of compliance with the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. No, total value is $15,000 for one year. Funding through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of State of Oregon County Fairgrounds Capital Improvement Grant Agreement with the Oregon Business Development Department toward construction of the new county fair multipurpose building. Grant values $277,777. Funding is through Business Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order with Robertson Motors for the purchase of 12 2024 Dodge Pursuit All-Wheel Drive Durangos for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office through a State of Oregon Cooperative Contract. Total value is $524,733.60. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Item four, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order with McLaughlin and Erdley Group Incorporated doing business as Cyrennet.com for the purchase of patrol vehicle equipment through a City of Beaverton Cooperative Contract. Total value is $196,308.39. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Item five, approval of a personal services contract with Consoor North America Incorporated for engineering design services for the 2024 transportation maintenance paving projects. Total contract value is $750,213. Funding is through House Bill 2017 funds. No county general funds are involved.
Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to remove agenda item A2, A3, A4, A5, and F3 for discussion.
Repeat that again, Commissioner Savis, slowly.
Agenda item A2, A3, A4, A5, and F3.
Okay, Tony, we're going to set those aside. We'll take a vote on the consent agenda, then we'll bring those back for approval. Does that make sense? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Commissioner Savis, I think you need to state your motion succinctly. Can you repeat that, please? I move to approve the consent agenda minus these items that you wish to remove.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus items A2, A3, A4, A5, and F3.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Savis has moved to approve the consent agenda, removing items A2, A3, A4, A5, and F3. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. I will now entertain a motion to bring back the removed items. I will entertain a motion to pass items on the consent agenda, A2, A3, A4, A5, and F3.
Chair, I was asking for a discussion, I think.
I didn't hear your discussion, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, that was the point. So, as I mentioned on Tuesday, and I'll just give a little bit of background, make sure I don't, this is not confused, but as I mentioned on Tuesday, when these items came up, is that I've had a request, not unlike a request of past years, not every year, but it's not uncommon for, you know, myself to ask questions of different departments in research and in the Sheriff's Department, for example, when it comes to vehicles and what mileage they roll over and so forth. You know, Sheriff's Office over the years has been responsive to that. However, this year, this summer, I made a request a couple times publicly in these settings and also in emails, requesting some information that relates to the motor unit and also, you know, some fleet-related issues. So as regards to A2, A3, A4, and 5, which is the motor unit, I have made those requests. We discussed it Tuesday. I was hoping to get an update. I was wondering if Mr. Madcor has heard anything. We've had to use, have you sought out a public records request? Or maybe Gary can add, but as I know it today, I have nothing as of today, even though it's been months, on a pretty basic request. So in the, with respect to transparency and the job we're tasked to do, I'm just a little bit troubled by that. It'll mean no disrespect to any departments or any elected officials, but I want to do acknowledge the good work that other departments have done and elected official departments as well in responding to my request. This is just, I don't understand this one.
Gary.
Yes, I'm sorry, this has been more complicated than it needs to be. We are pulling the invoices from our, we call it PeopleSoft, our financial system. I'm sorry it's not completed yet, but we're pulling them ourselves, our staff and the county administration office, because we have access to that data. So we're pulling all the invoices, which shows the mileage or the, yeah, the mileage numbers you requested. So we're still collecting the data, but we don't have it completed yet by today.
Okay. The other question that came up was what goes before, you know, through purchase order? What that threshold is? We've approved things for way below the threshold with purchase order regardless of departments. So have we identified a date that these recent, the recent purchase of six motorcycles, when the Board of County Commissioners approved that officially?
We're still compiling that as well, and I'm sorry it's not for today, but if I may quickly, the board approves, you know, board orders or contracts, and then once the board authorizes, in this case, a contract for purchases, then staff can sign up to 150,000 signing authority for departments. So it was authorized by the board, but I'm going to pull the documents to get that for you, but I don't have it for you today, Commissioner.
Okay. Now going to F3. F3 is the purchase for 12, I believe, Dodge vehicles, which I believe will have about a $60,000 a piece price tag, fully equipped, I believe, as I understand it. How, Gary, is, are those paid for through the different funds? General Fund, LED, the levy, so forth? Are those, are those coming out of all three, and at what proportion? That was a, something that was, we discussed during the budgets process, we didn't have resolved, and I was hoping to have our systems and our processes harmonious and speaking to each other. And I think the way we've done it in the past is obviously was revealed that it's not clear and it's not transparent. So can you enlighten me how those costs are being apportioned?
Yes, we, and yes, the Sheriff's Office is complying on the request of myself and the Budget Committee and the Board to redistribute the allocated costs between all the funding streams, in this case for the Sheriff's Office, the General Fund, the Public Safety Levy, and the Enhanced Law Enforcement District. And this item, as you know, it's through Department of Transportation and Development because they do fleet for the entire county, including the Sheriff's Office. So it's coming from general funds in the Department of Transportation and Development, which will then later be intra-fund reimbursed with the levy and the LED fund. So it's all going to work out. So it is appropriate, what's listed on the agenda today, that it's coming from general funds, which it is, from Transportation and Development, but the LED and the Public Safety Levy will be interfunded to pay for their portion of that, those purchases.
So the funds will be compensated back to DTD from all three of those allocations, separate allocations?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Well, I, I'm probably going to abstain on a few of those that we pulled here, but I'll move forward with F3. Chair, I move we approve agenda item F3.
Hold it, Commissioner Savis. We have a motion on the table. Before we go with another motion, we probably should rescind the current motion.
Chair, I believe it died for a lack of a second.
I did not hear a second for the motion.
I thought Commissioner Schull seconded. You didn't?
I did not.
Oh, okay, there we go. Go ahead, please.
I move we approve agenda item F3.
Commissioner Savis has moved we approve agenda item F3. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Some discussion. Gary, what have we done with items A2, A3, A4, and A5? What have we done with that?
I'm going to make a motion.
Just a moment.
So those have been budgeted appropriately. Commissioner Savis was asking for information that we have not finalized to present to him, but I do feel that those, and those are small amounts, those are ODOT grants, so.
Right.
Those are appropriately budgeted and financed and recognized.
Okay, just so the public knows, is the item of F3, the Durangos and the equipment that goes with them, there's probably another item on here, those were budgeted for and approved in May from the Budget Committee. Because the Sheriff's Department plans on the use of the vehicles, they get a lot of miles, hundreds of thousands of miles on them every couple years, so we're constantly in replacement fleet mode. Those are budgeted for, those are, I think it's not an extra cost whatsoever. So with that in mind, we have a motion on the table to pass. So would we, okay, I'm a little bit confused. Did we approve the consent agenda?
You did, yes.
We're going to add back in F3, correct?
Yep.
Okay, let's take the roll, the poll for F3.
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Commissioner Schull, you have your light on.
Yes, I wanted to address the A2, 3, 4, and 5 items.
Go ahead.
The other items that were pulled, A, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are respectively, for the distracted driving enforcement grant, $15,000, of which all but $3,000 is paid by the Oregon Department of Transportation. A3 is for a grant for driving under the influence of intoxicants, High Visibility Enforcement Grant, for $15,000, which is paid for under the Oregon Department of Transportation Grant, all but $3,000 from the General Fund. And A4 is for the Pedestrian Safety Enforcement Grant, also from Oregon Department of Transportation, and $1,000 paid by the General Fund. And finally, A5 is for the Oregon Department of Transportation Speed Enforcement Grant. So I would recommend that we approve these four items today.
Commissioner Schull has moved we approve consent agenda items A2, A3, A4, and A5. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would just like to acknowledge that I think all, in function and in purpose and what it does for public safety, I am completely supportive of the partnership between ODOT and the Sheriff's Department for those purposes as outlined by Commissioner Schull. My issue here today is really just to relate, hopefully, improving our communication and relationship into just doing the work that we are basically responsible to do, and I just, it's just this hiccup I don't understand. It shouldn't take It shouldn't take months to get this kind of information, and I do appreciate the rank and file of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. This is not a reflection on any of that, and if it's our systems hang up, it's our systems hang up. I think, I believe I spoke to the issue about our managing for results or strategic plan or whatever you want to call it, that there would be a, ultimately, there'd be a dashboard in which we could look at those. Again, no reflection on any staff, but the progress and the transparency and the purpose to our citizens is that they be able to track what we do and see what we do. And I do think that, you know, things, mileage rollovers and when we, what we buy and what we don't buy, and how we do it, I think are important, and, you know, so I will be abstaining simply to make a point, and I certainly know the votes are here to pass it, so it's not a matter of trying to interrupt those activities for the purpose in which those grants have been granted for. That's all I have, Chair.
Any other comments? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savas? Abstain. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes, 3, 1, 0. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Next Chair, which you convene is the Water Environment Services Board.
I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board of Directors.
This is Request for Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
One item, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for Work Crew Services. Agreement value not to exceed $260,000 over four years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Operating Fund. No County General Funds are involved.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second. Director Shaw has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Apologies. Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes, 4-0. Thank you very much. I will adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and convene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. We are already at public comment. Anybody wishing to testify, please drop a blue card. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as a BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first. I have a couple of blue cards. Les Poole, please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, as always, Les Poole. I'm a lucky resident of Clackamas County. I was born in Multnomah, but I moved to Clackamas 28 years ago, and it was one of the smartest things I ever did. I'd like to share something with you on a subject that I've been active in since its inception, and that's the infamous Oregon tolling plan, which has had a number of names, and it's still kind of in flux. But I want to share something that I just, I find it hard to believe. Does anyone in the room know what the number-one priority for the Oregon tolling program is?
Why don't you enlighten us?
It's equity, of course, and somehow through equity, we're going to justify something that is completely inequitable. There is no fairness, there is no equity, and it's totally impossible with what ODOT has proposed. Couple of points, and I'll leave this, I wrote a note here, and I'd like to leave it for Mr. Besner and for your transportation folks, if you could move it to them, but I've noticed, you notice that they have the advisory speeds on the freeway, one on each lane. Obviously, as the advisory speed goes down, the toll will go up, and what I and others have noticed is, at least half or two-thirds of the time, when you see an advisory speed and it says 40, the traffic is going 50, 55. And so, my question is, of course, will the tolls be based on what the advisory speed is or what the traffic flow speed is? I think the answer's probably advisory. So, what I'm getting at is that this system that is being proposed is incredibly expensive, and again, it's not fair. A little news from California, they have toll roads there, and like what's being proposed here, a private entity will manage and run this. Unlike California, California has toll roads that are privately operated. Here, we've got public freeways and highways that are already paid for that ODOT wants to impose a toll on, and what I fear is this, I fear that those that are unable to pay a toll, or maybe they get on the highway, they receive a bill in the mail, and they don't pay it right away, they'll be subject to unreasonable fees and fines. Here's a quick conclusion for you. Here's a notice of toll evasion sent to me from someone in, excuse me, in Orange County. Commissioner Savas is from Orange County, coincidentally, and he's been involved in this tolling fiasco since day one. Here we are, 518 of 23, in Lane 11, a $3.04 toll. The penalty for not paying it is $57.50, because you're a violator, okay? And when you're a violator, you pay big. Now, of course, because this individual came back on the toll road going the opposite direction, that same day, there's a $3.89 toll, but if it's not paid within 10 days, if they don't have it within 10 days, $57.50 fine. So, you got $120 fine. Now, I'm not saying that's exactly how it will go in Oregon, but you can bet that's all part of it. That's all part of it. I appreciate the opportunity. We're very fortunate to be able to speak here. I'm over my time, but I want to just real quickly share something with you. I received this in the mail, as did all of the participants in the water treatment decision, the treatment plant, and this isn't...
You're talking what Monmouth County wants to build for Bull Run. Please quantify that.
Thank you. And the reason that I'm pulling this out is this is the written decision from the hearings officer. This is a book, folks, and what that means is that with all the complexities involved, the odds of this dragging out or ending up in court are incredibly high, and that's unfortunate. So, I know you, as the county, are kind of caught in the middle of this, as we all are, because the plant that they're proposing is right on the county line and will affect our traffic safety in our communities. So, I know you folks are very well aware of the issue, and I'm just here to be a messenger on behalf of the community. So, have yourself a great holiday, and if all goes well, you'll see me here next year.
Thank you very much. Up next, Paul Edgar, please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes. About. About.
Thank you all. My name is Paul Edgar. I live in Oregon City, and I'm thankful also of being a resident of Clackamas County. First, I want to thank all of you for being, serving us. My time and my life starts to wind down a little bit as I age, and to see everybody up here doing heavy work for us, thank you. I also have been blessed by you guys to have served on the Transportation Committee of Clackamas County that created the current transportation system plan. I've been on the Community Action Board, and I want to thank you for that, and I've been on the Veteran Advisory Council. I'm currently on that, and I've also been serving on the Historic Review Board, and I'm one of those people that lives in a historic house and believes in protecting our history and for future generations to understand, so it's critical. But, one of the issues that I sent you guys all an email, and it was on housing, and it was on the inability to provide transitional housing or temporary housing in Clackamas County. And what I, I went to the Building Department, I had a gentleman ask me who wanted to develop one acres of property and use it for humanitarian purposes. The gentleman was, who happens to be a retired Portland Fire Department captain, who has always been in public service. And when I went up to the Building Department, I found out, they walked through the door, and I said, you know, I'm trying to find out if we could build temporary housing for veterans and non-veterans, and he said, "No, that's not possible." And I thought, wow, that's not possible. You mean our code does not allow us to do this? And he said, "Yeah." So, I went over to them, to the engineering guys, and talked to them a little bit about it, and then I found out that if I wanted to build an affordable temporary structure where somebody, I don't want people sleeping under tents and tarps. I think we can do better in Clackamas County than that. And so, then, he said, "Well, if that's going to be occupied, then you have this fee, this code, this thing down..." We could have $60,000 per unit in individual fees and excise taxes and everything, packed on trying to create something that's affordable, that a nonprofit or an individual can have capabilities of keep, trying to save a life. And we should be, I built in my backyard, as somebody that's, an eight-by-12, three sheets of plywood down for a platform. I put the walls up, doors in it, insulated it, wired it, heated it, or put temporary, you know, a little heater in it, lights. I did it for less than $4,000 total. Now, you're talking to somebody who built this at my age. I'm fortunate, my father had my brothers and I all learn how to build things, so we have skills when I was young. But, we need an ability to be able to not have, to have a $4,000 or $10,000 structures that are not all burdened by 1,000 fees, where we can provide temporary housing to save lives. And we need some code revisions and some exceptions that allow this to happen. I believe life has value. We don't know what somebody's going to turn out to be, and we need to have abilities to prevent people from falling off that cliff. We don't have solutions right now, and I, to me, I just, this is one of the things, I signed my name as a member of the Historic, of the cab and of Veteran Advisory VAC. It was almost challengeable, because I didn't get approval to voice my opinion, to try to save lives. And so, my hope is in coming before you today, that you understand, we have to make some changes if we're going to respond to this homelessness and this problem, because 60% of the people in Clackamas County are now paycheck to paycheck, those who have paychecks. They don't have room. Throw a toll on top of it, they go down the drain. All of these things, we've got to be thinking smarter about how people can afford to live in county. Thank you.
Mr. Edgar, thank you for coming forward. Yes, we all got your email. Maybe you noticed this week that this board did pass a housing situation for these people you talk about, okay? 24 units, similar to the Veterans Village, but not, and then a more affordable way to house them, three people in one pod, so to speak, with services. And go back to the policy session from yesterday, and you can find that. And you do express a lot of frustration, and I want to thank you for your efforts on working on this problem and always giving us good ideas. Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, stole a little bit of my thunder there, but appreciate, Mr. Edgar, we've known each other a long time. I know that you are quite involved and read a lot and go to a lot of meetings, so I really appreciate your advocacy in both worlds, on the housing issue and also on transportation issues and also on the, for veterans, so I want to just note that, and thanks for your service as well. That said, as you know, you're familiar with the Veterans Village, what the Chair was speaking about, and this board discussed yesterday, was approving, moving forward with conceptual design and contracting for the property adjacent to that, that we own, for at least 24 units, perhaps right around 24 units. So, we're moving forward with that. So, that's one form of transitional housing we're adding to, but the other form of transitional housing, what we are, have been doing for a long time now, has been the hotel room, we're renting hotel rooms around the region. We had, we don't own any of them. We had an opportunity earlier this year, you're aware of that, that that passed us by, and so, that's one form, and there's another one. Yeah, also, on the retention side, so people that are about to lose their homes, we're also funding substantial amount of households with supportive housing services dollars and others to keep people in their homes. So, we do have programs, we are addressing it, and I think that from the numbers I've seen for Clackamas County, we're doing, maybe compared to some other counties, whether you look at it on a percentage basis especially, I think we're doing an outstanding job. We have a lot more to do. My concern is that the funding that's provided for all this is not going to hap, go on in perpetuity unless the voters can continue to support that, and that's going to be very challenging, because that puts burden on existing families, so it's kind of a circular concern that these costs are just going to rise and rise and rise. But certainly understand your point about trying to erect something, and our building codes, you know, whether it's state-induced or, you know, us following state law, it is not easy, but I think the fact that we've got a system in place that's meeting those needs, maybe not completely, but we are continuing to grow that. So, thanks again for your advocacy.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, thanks again. I wanted to mention, I'd like to try and get you a link to something, to a meeting I had yesterday, and it was with the Pew Charitable Trust and what they have done. They basically have done a national survey, and, you know, that the majority of Americans' favorite policies to enable more housing, we know that. So, what they did really was look at the most successful areas that were increasing their housing capacity, and there was a lot, there was a lot of talking about the fact that, again, a lot of these regulations need to be streamlined. You can't get rid of some, because it's a health-safety piece, but there are things we can do better quicker, and if you'd like, I'll ask Caroline to forward that report to you. I think you'd really find it interesting and something you want to read, but it's really interesting that you're here speaking about this today, and I just had this overview of, yeah, of what's working around the rest of the country, and I'll also make sure, colleagues, I get that to you as well, because it's a pretty good report. Thanks for coming today, and Merry Christmas.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else in the room who would like to give public testimony? Seeing none, Tony, is there anyone online who would like to give public? Seen none, Tony, is there anyone online who would like to give public testimony?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's up?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I'd like to share the great work our county employees do during this forum. Here at the last business meeting of the year, I want to hit some of the highlights over the 12, past 12 months that I've shared with you about our amazing employees. We've received a lot of letters or calls from members of the public thanking our employees, some of the highlights from this year. In January, a member of the public wrote about our road cruise. With this winter event, you are giving so many the gift of safety and life, the best gift ever. In April, a person wrote about our medical examiner's office. A woman's, a woman's mother passed away. She wrote, "I have never had someone be more respectful and compassionate with my mom's passing than your staff was at Clackamas County." In July, someone wrote about our law library staff. "The information you helped provide and located for me allowed me to intelligently prepare and assist with our defense, ultimately resulting in a dismissal of the case." In September, a member wrote, a member of the public wrote about our water environment services staff who helped respond to a home sewer backup. Awful event when that occurs. "They made all the difference in the world to help me get through this event. Thank you to everyone who handled this call. You made a difference in my life." Next, I've talked to you before about our 911 operator dispatchers who help deliver babies over the telephone when the mother can't get to the hospital or the medical event in time. They're called stork babies. Our staff helped deliver four stork babies this year from our 911 center. Our supportive housing services team and Health Housing Human Services helped an 87-year-old homeless Korean War veteran find housing very quickly here in Clackamas County, thanks to our team. We've received national recognition for our staff, two highlights, our Children, Family and Community Connections Division of Health Housing Human Services and our Sheriff's Parole and Probation Division. Both were recognized by the United States Department of Justice for their work on the Second Chance Clackamas Employment Services Program, helping people find work. And our Clackamas County Human Resources Team was recognized by a national program and received a national award for our retirement plan, participant communication and education for our employees at Clackamas County. Excellent work. These are just a quick highlight of all the amazing things that our over 2,500 county employees do for the members of the public every day and in support of you commissioners for the work that you do as well. So thank you to our incredible staff and all they do every year. I wish them all a happy holidays and a great new year. And then logistically, commissioners, as you know, the board is on recess from December 15th through January 2nd, 2024. There will be no board meetings the next two weeks. The next business meeting is Thursday, January 4, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. That is my update today. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Savas, you're up first.
Yeah, thank you. As I kind of mentioned earlier, I was talking about the strategic plan, our, what we call our managing for results and my history with strategic plans, whether it's in business or in other public sectors, in special districts, when I first got started over 20 some odd years ago in public service. You know, I found that without a clear, calculated strategic plan, it's really hard to be, to implement and operate and have the financial security that whatever your mission is, that you are accomplishing that mission. I think the military is a great example of being extremely strategic, probably of all governments and what they do. Granted, sometimes things happen and there's politics that gets itself involved in those things and expenditures happen or budgetary things happen in Congress, and we don't necessarily fund our, you know, our military, our infrastructure, railroads, roads, highways, freeways. I think we are here in Clackamas County suffering from a massive underinvestment in infrastructure, most especially our highway system. But what I wanted to talk about, again, absent really a functional strategic plan, is my, my worry about the finances of this county in my current elected position with, you know, what we have learned about here in the last couple of weeks with cost and trying to meet the demands of the county and extra burdens. And I think Administrator is doing his best with our great staff to figure out a way to cut another $5 million from this upcoming budget, which is going to be very, very painful, as was the last budget for this particular year. I, the other thing I think that I wanted, wanted really talk about in my, you know, now approaching my 14th consecutive year here at the county, and that is the realization that people are retiring. And through attrition, we are losing very talented people, staff. And with that, we lose institutional knowledge. And I find myself at times in helping inform discussions about how we got where we got as a person that's got some of that institutional knowledge, because my roles, at least on an advisory capacity, in other roles prior to being a commissioner, is, goes into the 90s. So in discussions at Clackamas County Corning Committee, which was founded in 2020, or started on in 2020, and it was finally approved in 2021, or not 2020, 2000, and then subsequently finally approved the bylaws in 2001. So that's been in place for 23 years. And that's about relationships with the cities and about other agencies and things that came out of that, such as the Library District and everything. And I really appreciated the video earlier. Thank you PGA for putting that together. But looking back even farther, that, that, that investment, if you want to call it that, of that institutional knowledge and lessons learned and how we go forward without making mistakes or informing how we move forward in a way that avoids those, I think is really valuable. But when you lose, when you lose that institutional knowledge, which is going to happen everywhere, I mean, this is not unique to Clackamas County. It just, it's just something that I realize now more than ever because of my, my history here. I was speaking to another elected official from a jurisdiction over the weekend, had a long, two-hour conversation. And that person used to work here at Clackamas County, now it works for another jurisdiction and is also elected in another jurisdiction. So we were able to share some of that history and institutional knowledge and things that have happened here within Clackamas County and the metro region. And, you know, just mindful that once you're in this kind of work, I think you become very concerned and, you know, I don't know if passion is the right word. It's certainly, you have passion, you know, it keeps us going to continue to do what we do. But we really care, and I think that's what keeps us in this work, is that we really care. And we also, I think we also worry or fret sometimes that, you know, how are we, are the people there to pass the baton off to as, as things happen? When we bring in new folks, will they be, we hire new people, will we be able to have them here for a period of time? Will the, whether it's the pay or the incentives or the morale, will we be able to retain the people we need to retain and the people we do have? It's just the cycle, I think, that concerns me. But all to say, I just really want to say, give my gratitude to all of the past and present county staff, past and present elected officials, for all the work they do, especially because they care and where they care and how they care and their passion for the work and trying to serve the needs. I wish I could say that families and households are in better shape than they were the year before and the year before and the year before, but with inflation and all the things where the pressures we have, and we even discussed them earlier, I'm just very concerned that, that moving forward, whether it's our finances here at the county or it's the finances for our citizens out there, that things are getting tougher. And whether you want to look at inflation or go into the grocery store or look at tolling, what that might do to impacts and, and how we fund the future infrastructure we desperately need, I'm not sure how we're going to financially cope with all of that. So as we end this year and look forward to next year, I will be trying to make that a, a more powerful part of my portfolio and how I move forward and what I do next year is my contribution to addressing some of those needs. So I, I hope to do that in a collaborative way with my colleagues. And I, you know, I think that cooperation and collaboration are really key, and how we work together is key, and I'm hoping things improve. With that said, I wish everyone a happy holiday season, and I yield the floor back.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, good morning, everybody. I'm looking forward to a new year in 2024 with lots of exciting things that were going to be happening. And Gary, I wanted to thank you for all your work this year, and especially today for mentioning that Department of Labor grant with the Clackamas Second Chance Program, because that is a workforce program that we have here in our county with our Workforce Board. And as people are being released from prison, basically, they try to make sure they get them set up with ways to get training, get jobs, help them get back on their feet. And to that, I want to just mention that yesterday, as well in my meeting, not only did we have the review of the Pew Charitable Trust housing streamlining opportunities that we should look at and potentially use, we also had an opportunity to talk about the reauthorization of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. That's going to be very important to us for our local Workforce Board, because that is the vehicle that Congress funnels dollars through to states and local communities to skill people up and get workforce training. And there's going to be a real emphasis this go-around on really working more closely with the business community. It's in the legislation, you can read it, you can find it online, to really take a look with the business community to see what kind of skill sets they believe their workers need and to work cooperatively with our community colleges, our education folks, our unions, our trades, to help make sure that the people are getting the skills and the training they need to really get good-paying jobs. So I'm pretty excited about that because the final thing, it was really great for me to find out, is I just got appointed as well to the Governor's Workforce Board for Systems Policies. So I get a chance now to, to take a look at how we're doing things, not just at the local level here in Oregon on our Workforce Board, but also what does the whole system look like? And again, as, as Mr. Edgar said, it's all about streamlining, it's all about getting it done, it's all about getting people, helping people get to the right place where they can get the training. And I'm really looking forward to this coming year to doing a lot of work on workforce and going to have some fun with that. Finally, Merry Christmas, everybody, or Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah. It is a time of year where it's, it's dark outside, but we always hope and know that the light will return in the spring. And I'd like to end with my favorite Christmas quote from Fra Angelica. He was a Dominican friar, monk, an Italian painter of the early Renaissance, and this is the, the quote that I always love because it's, it's a harsh world out there right now. And a lot of times, we're feeling burdened with the weight of not only what we're facing here locally, trying to help people, you know, live the fullest lives they can, but also, you know, the world situation's been very harsh lately. So I'm going to leave you this quote because it is a quote of hope, and here it is. "The gloom of the world is but a shadow behind it, yet within our reach is joy. Take joy, and so at this Christmas time I greet you with the prayer that for you, now and forever, the day breaks and the shadows flee away." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Gary, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Schrader, Gary.
Yes, Chair Smith, you asked if I could quickly give a quick budget, budget update to all of you, and thank you, Commissioner Savas, for your comments. You know, I'm your budget officer. I present you data and information to help you make decisions on how to spend the public's money wisely. In my opinion, the county's budget is stabilized. However, there's always growing needs. The county's entire budget, as you know, is $1.7 billion, of which property taxes, the residents pay is only 9% of that, $155 million. And that's your money you decide how to spend countywide. The property taxes grow about 3% to 4% a year, so that does grow, but your demands are growing higher. And that primarily, I talked about our amazing county employees, 2,500, they cost. These amazing people that serve the public, they cost money. Their salaries, their benefits, their PERS rates, those grow higher than the property tax income you receive and the other funding you receive. And we can't control those rates. You've been very, very good about holding steady, no new taxes, no new fees. We're funding a courthouse without raising the public's money, and we did a major budget adjustment for this current year to accommodate that. Commissioner Savas is right, I'm looking at potentially about a $5 million further reduction. That's not final yet, so I don't want to say that's not final.
$500,000.
Five million, sorry, five million. That's not final yet. That's not because we're in the hole, it's because to accommodate things that are important to you commissioners, primarily public safety. Those and costs have increased, so if you wish, we need to accommodate somewhere else. So all to say is staff will continue to work to give you the best data you can to make good decisions. But I do feel, in my opinion, the budget's stable, but there's always choices you have to make based on circumstances out of your control. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. This morning, I'm going to forego any comments about issues or challenges that we have in the county, and I would like to talk to you about Christmas. Christmas is an inclusive thing for all people throughout the world. And I'm reminded, 20 years ago in Iraq, two days before Christmas that year, I was paying a, an Iraqi work crew their day's wages when they asked me for the day off on Christmas. And I was surprised because they were all Shia Muslims. And I asked them why they wanted the day off on Christmas. And they all said that they loved Christmas, it was a joyful time, and it was their tradition to celebrate it with a big feast. And so I, I told them all, it was about 50 of them that day, I said, "You can have Christmas Day off," and I said, "You can have tomorrow off," which was Christmas Eve Day, "and I'll pay you for those days." So I paid them that night, two days before Christmas, and off they went, down the dusty roads of Iraq. Well, the day after Christmas, they came back. I asked them all how their Christmas was, and they all had a story about taking the money they were paid on that Tuesday night, Christmas was on Thursday that year, and going out and buying a turkey and having a big feast for their families in their villages. You know, Christmas is a time of joy for all people. It's a time when the people of this world can just forget about the problems, forget about the issues, and think about joy and the hope that Jesus brought to the world on that cold night on the first Christmas. And I would ask everybody in this troubled world, this time of bombardment with current events on your cell phone and on your computer and on the TV, just put it all down, concentrate on the things that are important this Christmas, concentrate on your children, your wives, your husbands, your girlfriends, your boyfriends, your neighbors, and truly slow down and enjoy what it means to celebrate Christmas. Thank you all for your time. I thank you all, on the staff of the Clackamas County, and for all the people in Clackamas County who have worked with us this year in 2023 to help operate this county. Thank you all for your work, your time, and God bless each and every one of you in Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for your comments. I will conclude with my comments. On Monday, we had celebrated a milestone in Clackamas County. You know that's really big building behind us, we're building a new courthouse. It's kind of hard to ignore, it's quite large. On the construction field, there is a tradition. When you reach the top floor, it's called a topping off. So we went to the, they went to the top floor and have reached that pinnacle, and now we're framing in, putting in windows, finishing the interior, and it's called a topping off ceremony. Commissioner Scholl and I attended a lunch celebrating the topping off of our courthouse, and it is a milestone in Clackamas County, one I'm sure probably won't be repeated in, in many decades and many decades. in many decades and many decades. We sat and had lunch with this Supreme Court justice from Oregon came, two judges, our district attorney, Commissioner Schol and I, and had a very nice lunch. We talked with the workers over there. I gave a little speech, as well as the PCL manager, John, and it was just a really, really nice, wonderful moment that we had with that. And it was good to note, the courthouse project is on time and on budget. Thank you very much. Today, there, and Paul Edgar, this kind of goes to what you were saying, the Measure 110 has a hotline, and there's a report today out in the newspaper, and you may see it in your news commissioners, that during the last year, that hotline phone number has served 577 people. And the article is quite critical because Measure 110 has not kept up with what it's supposed to do. So it got me to thinking, we have our own hotline in Clackamas County, it's called the CHA hotline. So I had staff go back and figure out what we have been doing in Clackamas County on our CHA hotline this year. Whereas Measure 110 has served 577 in the last year, our Clackamas County hotline, which is seven days a week and you get a live person, has served 11,400 calls in the same amount of time as the other one. I want to read you some statistics from that. Just a moment. Coming right up. Emily, where did your email go? Hmm, it just escaped me. I'm going to, we're going to take some time and I'm going to go back and find that email because I think it's really important. Delete, search, Emily. Anyway, they have served an incredible amount of people. We have placed people in homes, we have given rent assistance, we have helped them find employment, and there's strategically services that have been very well provided. Not everybody who calls a hotline necessarily accepts those services, but we are placing them, we are finding places for them to be and assisting in their needs. There was an elderly gentleman about 72 years old who called up and his rent had gone up to $1,200 a month, yet his social security income was about $1,150 a month. Obviously, he's not making ends meet. This particular hotline was able to put him in a social security program that aided in his employment and aided in his rent, able to connect him with food services and everything else. So this is what we're doing in Clackamas County, prevention as well as help, keeping people in their homes, in their rents. What used to be rent assistance, we could not use rent assistance until somebody had been evicted or lost their ability, they were already on the street. Thankfully, that has changed. We're able to give rest assistance before those people are either forced out, evicted, or cannot pay. If they're in a situation, they see the economic, for instance, hardships coming, we're able to step in and abate that. So I'm quite happy with that. We're continuing to make improvement. We always need improvement. There's always a dark cloud, it seems, that somebody wants to bring up. But in Clackamas County, we're working very, very hard to try to alleviate as much as we can. I've often said, we didn't get into this situation overnight, and it won't be allevied overnight. But as we go into the Christmas holidays, I want to wish everybody a wonderful Christmas, New Year's, have lots of fun. See no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.